Get started with our work session. Welcome to everyone. Carrie, are you on? We see your picture. Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We cannot hear you.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear? Can you hear me now? I've taken myself off mute.
Oh, no, we can see your mouth moving, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
So don't see your mute signal either. So I'm not sure what's going on.
Let me check.
Chris says, Chris, you can hear me. I don't know why.
We can hear you now, Carrie.
All right.
Okay, so we have. Somebody's got something on. Okay, we've got everyone. The council is in attendance except for Carrie is with us remotely. So the first thing, oh, this is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. And I'm Mayor Wendy Prey. We're going to convene our work session. The first thing on the work session is just the appointment of Rachel Skinner as the EMT captain. Beth Wilding has been serving faithfully and well for quite a few years. She's had some life changes and needs to resign. And Rachel has agreed to accept this position and we're very grateful. She's highly qualified and super motivated. And if anybody, if anybody has a concern or question, now's the time to ask because we'll swear her in at the beginning of our regular meeting. Yes.
A simple question, not that it's, it's more of her qualifications. She's been working volunteering in Spanish Fork or Salem.
She's been working on the Salem ambulance.
And so will she continue to do that? Will her time, will that conflict with anything she has to do here? I don't know.
Do you know the answer? John?
Our EMS operates under Salem's license.
Right.
Well, that is actually, I think.
It's a benefit.
Okay, that's good.
And, and Rachel's really good at figuring out balancing time if it's a problem.
Yeah, I was thinking more of a time issue than a qualification.
That's right.
I know. And they're nice. They're nice kids.
I, I just wanted to share with the council that she is just a fireball. She's really good at helping us. She's been a member quite a while now. She, as, as you know, she goes to Salem and helps them weekly. And she is their training officer. So I don't think that'll change either. So it's really, really made our department closely tied, better tied to Salem. So she's really helped with that and they love her down there. So that's always positive to have somebody with our group that they like. So yeah.
I don't know Rachel really well, but what I do know, I'm, I'm super impressed. And I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to do this in the future, but I'm going to say thank you to Beth Wilding for building this and creating this and doing all this. She's been phenomenal. So I know Rachel's helped a lot through the process too, hasn't she?
Well, Beth started and then she retired and cleaned. Right, did it work for a while? And then he resigned back to get over again. So Beth has been around a lot for a long time. And she did a good job getting down when there was someone well qualified to build her slot.
Beth is still in the background.
Yeah, she'll still be, she'll still be on the team. All right, Craig.
I turned my mic off because I was coughing. Sorry folks. Anyway. Okay, Craig, you spoke up and now it's your turn to talk some more. The new fire truck that we'd like to order.
You can have mine, chief.
All right, I appreciate your time tonight. Back in 2019, we started to look at our new engine to replace our current structure engine. We're looking on, once that was 10 years old, moving at the back line, putting a new engine in that place. After 20 years, the back line will be replaced with the new engine we're getting. So we're a couple of years behind that. I think we moved this out to 2033 by the time we need another engine. But anyways, we did, we did some research on these and we looked at two different manufacturers, Rosenbauer and Pierce. First off, we looked at Pierce to replace the current engine that we have now. Type one structure engine capable of its NFPA compliant for structure protection. It was going to come back equipped around 650,000 for a new engine. Most of that's because when you go with a chassis like that, it's a custom chassis with four wheel drive. And we need four wheel drive up there. So in, in the meantime, they've come out with what they call a type three, type one hybrid chassis. And this is not only capable of doing structure protection, it can do pump and roll, grass fires, brush fires. So it gives us, and it gives us four wheel drive right from the factory. So we started looking at this, we started looking down this path. There's a number of cities that have been going to this type of unit. Started looking into it. We looked at Rosenbauer. Rosenbauer came back at 455 for, for their engine. We Pierce, we specked out a Pierce engine. That one came back at right around 560. It was 557. So we started looking, how could we get the Pierce spec down? It seemed it was a complex chassis, meaning that it was much more expensive. So we, a group of us got together and we started taking a Pierce, what they call Pierce responder, which was the same chassis. Putting everything we want on it or what we need on it, not what we want. And ended up, this chassis came back at 414. So it's quite a bit less still than the Rosenbauer. We went up and visited with the chief up in Wasatch. He has both units. We got to talk to the chief, engineers that ran both trucks. I think the biggest thing about the Pierce is the layout is very much like our current engine. So when we're dealing with volunteer firefighters, we're trained a certain way when we show up to a house fire. How we're going to pull hose off the truck and so on. So the Pierce lines up with that. The Rosenbauer doesn't. And you would have to learn another truck and you could get confused in the heat of the moment about which truck you're on. So that was, that's my biggest thing for picking up Pierce. Their customer service has really stepped it up. They've been very good to us and our engine. I've had a couple of issues with it and they've helped me out with it. The chassis comes also with a three year warranty. But, so what we're asking tonight is we are asking to be able to take a vote, get the engine ordered. It's 18 months out. So by the time it comes around, I'll let Chris talk about the financing and stuff. But by the time it comes down, we would have the 105,000 to put down on it. Which brings our payments lower, which is within, it's under our 50,000 capital improvements fund that we already have in our budget each year. So if, if we do the down payment, we'll actually have some leftover that we can keep in the bank. And get it ready for the next brush truck that's going to be coming in another 10 years. So if, if Chris, Chris, are you up there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'll let you talk about the financing.
Great. We've spoken with, first of all, it's been through the finance committee a couple of times. We've run a few things past them just to make sure that if they had any questions or any things that they want to bring to the council. It was unanimous, the two or three times that was brought to the finance committee that they wanted to push this through to city council for your guys' approval. I'm going to go ahead and share a screen here that just talks about the couple of different financing options that we have through Zion's Bank. And this is all as of today. Now, we won't be getting a loan today because there is an 18 month wait period on it. But just wanted to get you guys some quick figures so that you can see if we did close it today. And these come from Zion's Bank themselves, Mark Anderson. So if we go ahead and do a zero down payment. The truck costs $470,000. It's a 2.62% interest on a 10 year note. It'd be $54,000 a year. If we do a down payment of 105,000 and where we're getting 105,000 is currently have 5,000 in the savings from last budget. 50,000 from this year's budget that has been allocated. And then 50,000 from next year's budget, then that would give us $105,000. Or we would borrow a total of 365, taking the same interest rate. At a 10 year note would drop the payment down to 41, approximately $41,500 per year.
So I ran the numbers and it's also a, over the life of the loan, a $20,000 savings to the city if we put the down payment down. So over 10 years, we save $20,000.
Now, what that, what, the, the reason that the, the 470 is total for the truck and to outfit it. So that includes hose, tools, et cetera, and stuff so on. So that's what's different than the 14 for the truck.
Craig has a question. So if we, if we say yes now, does that lock the price in for us? Are we looking at whatever the price is going to be in a year?
That does lock our price in for the purchase of the truck, not the interest rate.
I'm Mark Hales. I'm with Sid Martin Emergency Group on sales.
Wait, we're, we're wonderful. We're thrilled you're here. Will you come up and speak by a mic? Because we got people remoting and they won't be able to hear you.
Introduce him real quick.
Okay.
He's the one that sold us our, our engine down there that we've enjoyed 10, 12, 15 years ago now. And he's always very responsive. So anyway, glad he's here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Anyway, like I said, I'm Mark Hales with Sid Martin Emergency Group. I've been with the, in fire sales for now almost 17 years. And this is our third ownership at Sid Martin Group. And it has been a blessing, not only for our fire departments because of the way they do their service. And, and for their employees. But all you'd have to do to lock in that 413, about 414. Is either we sign a contract or you give us a purchase order and that locks it in. We would get that sent in, that would start the process. We don't want to wait till January. We've got a notification that we're going to have probably close to a 7% price increase in February. With all the costs and everything that's gone so sky high. But yes, all, all you have to do is just contract or a purchase order.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no money required down. If you did put some money down, they do pay interest on any monies that is put down. And I could, I mean, if you had that 105 put down, it doesn't sound like you'll be here still.
Well, we'd have 55.
Anyway, but yeah. We did a total prepay. If you prepaid, it was like a savings of about $9,000. Isn't that right, Chris?
Yeah, remember you were going to go there. It would actually cost us more money to prepay by about a point and a half in interest.
Because that's what we're getting now from the state fund that we're.
No, it's, oh, it would be, the $9,000 would be actually. Excuse me, the 2.62% interest is only 1.6% savings. So we got the loan now, take 2.62% interest to save 1.6, we're, we're basically upside down.
And then Chris explained that the truck itself is the collateral.
Yeah, that's through Zion's Bank. But yeah, the truck would be collateral, wouldn't be collateralized against any taxes or revenues.
So are there any questions on that?
Chris, this may be an unfair question, or you may not have an answer for it. But how do the interest rates compare with these city loans with like the rest of the market? I mean, is, is it, if we have a lot of inflation, what's the risk of that interest rate going up next 18 months?
Yep.
Significantly, I don't know. I, with, with the way the markets are, their, the rates have already gone up in the past 40 days. I think Mark said, and it's Mark Anderson with Zion's Bank, he said a quarter, a half percent. There's going to be some fluctuations definitely in the next 18 months. How much? Nobody knows.
Do you know, are they tied to the same metrics or standards that traditional loans are?
No, because these, these go out for government financing, the government bonds. They do have some, I don't know if they're tied to LIBOR or what they're tied to on this particular deal. I could ask Mark Anderson at Zion's and get his opinion on that.
Mayor, this is Carrie. I have a question for Chris.
Okay.
So you're saying that if we, if we choose to put this down payment of $105,000 on, starting next year. That we will be locked into the rate currently?
No.
That we?
The only lock in we have is the cost of the vehicle if we sign a PO. The rate, the rate itself, there's a 60 day window right now on locking rates only.
Okay, so we can, we, if on our vote tonight, we will be locking the rate as well as the price of the vehicle.
No, just the price of the vehicle tonight.
Okay, just the price of the vehicle tonight and then, and then we will lock the rate at a future council meeting.
Correct.
All right.
These are just samples today.
All right, thank you.
We can only lock the rate in 60 days ahead and we're talking 18 months out. So it'll be a while.
All right, thank you.
Welcome. Okay, any other questions or concerns that you'd like to address? Thank you for your work on this, all of you.
So I'm noticing the schematics that are in here are for the chain and they don't match the picture. So which, which truck are we getting?
So you're getting one that looks more like this.
Okay.
The schematic is a little different because we have some different ages on it.
Okay.
And we just haven't received the drawing back to the back.
And, and that's fine. I just, honestly, what I was looking for is that front bumper so I could sit on it.
I just got a turret.
Okay. We're cool.
I, I think this is the right thing to do. It's just that it's kind of scary. Because we don't know what the interest rate will be in 18 months from now. But I think it's worth the gamble because we don't know what the price of the truck will be 18 months from now.
Right.
And so we're locking one in and loose on the other one.
We wish we could lock the other one in.
That's right. That's right. It's, it's not, not possible.
It is possible if you want to get the loan today and be upside down a percent. But, you know, I, Zion's Bank, Mark says that he couldn't advise us as a financial advisor to do something like that. It just didn't make sense. And I agree.
So what that says then is that he betting that it will be less than an interest, a, a one point difference in 18 months from now. Right? Maybe, no, you know, that's not that clean though, but, but it's kind of like that.
All right. Or he thinks the odds are even.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a prudent thing to do.
All right, any other?
The only comment I would make otherwise is, I mean, we've said this before, but in Woodland Hills, our big issue in the summer is fire and winter is snow. And any investment in something that keeps us safe in those two seasons with those two attributes is, is money well spent. I'm always assuming, I mean, we pay attention, we listen, we think, we decide. But we also know we have a really good fire chief who does due diligence, who investigates all the options and comes back with the best option. And, and so I'm personally, I look at this and say, if the chief says we need something like that, my brain says, yes, we do. Our machine is old and I trust that he always does the research very well and comes up with the best option. And so maybe this is an offhanded way of saying thanks to Craig for the work.
Well, and he economizes all over the place. So we appreciate that.
I agree with that.
Additionally, I'm, I mean, if we have a forest fire coming, kind of like we did before, we don't have a lot of control. But there are fires that start in our city, house fires, grass fires. And those are, I mean, if one of those got out of control, it could take the whole city down too. We wouldn't have the whole federal government behind us trying to put it out. So that's why, one of the reasons it's so important for us to have good equipment on site so that we don't get one of those fires out of control.
So. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig, chief. Okay, third item on the agenda, the proposed development agreement between City of Woodland Hills and Summit Creek. Okay, so there's a little bit of unclarity here because we got a development agreement that was old between, that was with Don Meacham when. About thousand outs to look at. And, and then we have a new development agreement that I think Summit Creek is proposing. Did they work with you, Wayne, on that?
No.
Okay.
It's on our side now to generate our response to that or our criteria and then work back together with them.
Okay. And, and I thought we had, but it's my understanding tonight that we have not sent that to our city attorneys yet. Jody? It has been sent, but we haven't gotten it back from them? Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So.
I think we need several weeks to, to study it and see if it's really what, what we want and what would be a win-win for everybody.
Okay, well, we need to take the right amount of time, but we need to not drag it on for months, which we've done in the past. So I'm, I was, what I would really like is to assign two of you council members to work with Summit Creek. On facilitating this and moving it down the road, keeping it moving. And so would, are there two of you that would be willing to do that?
I'll do it. And I can't do a lot of things that are required of this position, but I can do the legal, so I'll do that part.
Well, and I'm, I was, I was kind of thinking of you, Dave, just because you're, you've really been. The word's not aggressive, but proactive about the trails and the bike paths and those kinds of things that I think we, we want to make sure get.
Okay, that's fine.
Are you good? Okay, so.
And I presume, could we also add Wayne to that?
Yes, Wayne, yeah, Wayne, you will work with them, right? Okay, so I see, Becky, we got you on the line and there's a Steve. Is that Steve Dicker? Um.
Yeah, I think Steve's on and Ben.
Okay. Oh, and Ben, I didn't even know. Oh, and there's Brent too. So Paul MacArthur and Dave Pratt and, and Wayne will work with you to try and facilitate this and get it done.
Mayor, this is Carrie again. Would it be okay if we have our questions, then do you want us to, to send them to Paul and Dave for consideration?
I think that would probably be the best thing, very helpful.
All right.
Thing, yes.
All right, I haven't, I've, I've read it through once, but I, I think I'll, it'll take a little time to digest and I'll get my things to you and to both Paul and Dave.
All right, thank you, Carrie. All right, and.
Sorry, is this, is this the time to comment or do we wait for public comment section just regarding the, the schedule on that?
You might as well now.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wasn't sure if I, I didn't want to miss my chance if this was it. So, um, yeah.
And is this, is this Ben?
This is, sorry, this has been with, with Summit Creek. And so just regarding kind of timing. We sent it to the city three weeks ago and so you may have already done this. We just would like to know tonight if, if there's a date you guys are working towards to have that complete to where we can meet. We would just would like to try and resolve that if we can, so that we know that we're kind of moving forward. Some specific target in mind so we can get it, you know, resolve and execute it as quickly as possible. So, thank you.
Plus three weeks ago, why did I just get it today? So we got an email and it didn't have the attachment. We got the email several weeks ago, but we didn't get an attachment. And so there was no development agreement that I've seen until this today.
Okay.
So anyway, I guess, I guess, you know, and, and I say that not to be honorary, but more. I, I don't want to commit to a timeline when I just got a.
Right.
Multi-page document today. That, that would be unfair. So I think, I think we just.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to show you what I'm seeing.
So could we, what if we said, yes?
Summit Creek had this for quite a while and they never gave us a timetable as to when they would have it to us. And I have no doubt that they worked on it all that hard and what effort that's been into it, but they had it for a significant amount of time.
Okay, well, so would it be reasonable to say, can we set a goal that you guys will at least meet with them before our next meeting? That's two weeks.
Well, I think, I don't, I don't know that that would work. And again, I'm just thinking of all the different cogs, you know, we've got to get feedback from our lawyers. We've got to get feedback from the council members. I think we could have something by the first meeting in November.
Okay, the only meeting in November.
I, I realize that.
Right.
And then hopefully we could, we could narrow it down and everything and, and then maybe do a vote by December. But honestly, anything more aggressive than that, I wouldn't be comfortable with.
Okay.
And the only thing I would say is I have a built in, you know, timeframe on this because as of December 31st, I'm not on the council anymore. So whatever I want to see happen during my time, it'd have to be done before then and I'd like to see it resolved by then. So Ben, to your question, that, that's kind of my timetable is before the end of the year because there's some practical issues there. So I, I think, Dave, what you're suggesting, I think is appropriate. And we can certainly go back and forth between meetings as far as asking questions. With Summit Creek and keeping that dialogue open while we're going through this process.
Okay.
Can I ask if that fits with Wayne's schedule?
Sure, I work quite on the schedule. Do you all have it?
Wayne, thank you very much. All right, any other concerns or questions from you guys on the council or Becky, Steve, or Ben or Brent? Okay, moving on, hopefully we can get that facilitated and taken care of as soon as possible so that we don't hang them up. And we don't hang ourselves up. All right, number four, traffic control on Summit Creek and Woodland Hills Drive. Craig, did you?
Mayor, excuse me, I couldn't, I couldn't find the button on my phone fast enough.
Sorry, okay, and this is Steve, yes?
Yeah, yes, my, my apologies. I, I think if, if we could get some guidance from the city council. To at least have an initial walkthrough of the document before the next city council meeting. We could at least then have, you know, you know, have our thoughts, you know, presented. On what we're trying to accomplish in the development agreement. And that would give Dave and Paul, you know, maybe a little bit more basis on, on what to be considering when they go through that. Document and the same with Wayne. So I, I think if, if we could at least have that meeting before the next one, so at least we. we can get that kicked off. And then I also think that there's some legalese that can be done, you know, in parallel with the, with the business concepts going through. So I think if we can just both instruct the attorneys, a thing I don't want to do, like Paul had said, is get to the end of December and be worried over the whereas's and everything else in, in trying to push this thing through. So we, we just appreciate the efforts that are going to, you know, go into this over the next, you know, few months, so.
What form would you like that to take, Steve?
I, I think, you know, in reality, I think if we could get, you know, our council, your council.
You're talking about your council, right?
Well, well, yeah, so, sorry, yeah, the legal, our, our legal council, your legal council, and then the two representatives from the city council, Wayne, and then the people from our side in the conference room for, you know, a couple hours to walk through it, so that at least we can have some verbal discussions about it before we start to go through what I'll call the, the, the wordsmithing barrage that happens once you get, you know, attorneys involved, then I, I think we can at least make some good progress. And if we can try to get that done before the next meeting, I think that would be good because once we get into November, it, it starts to get a little bit more complicated with everybody's schedules and weather and everything else. So that, that would be my only suggestion if, if we could have some sort of coordination probably with Paul and Dave and Ben and, and Wayne. So, and then we'll try to make it work on our side, so that, that's just my, my ask, I guess.
Paul and Dave, you're good with that?
Steve, my goal is to have the agreement and my comments this week. So then I think Dave and I plan to get our comments to our legal council and get a response. So I, I think that should give everybody enough time to hit the, the goal that you just laid out as far as the timeline is concerned. I think it should, but that's, so I guess I'm saying I'm optimistic we can do that. But Dave, what do you think? I mean, you've got to go through it as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can go through it, that's, that's not too hard. I'm more thinking, when are we going to meet? You know, I just look at it and I'm, I'm like, well, we've got either this, this Thursday or next Thursday, before the next city council.
That's true, and I've gone next Thursday.
So take your pick, you know what I mean? And if it's this Thursday, then that means hopefully this meeting ends in about a half an hour so that we can review it.
Done.
That's just, that's, that's just the reality. I mean.
Right.
And, and Dave, we, we appreciate everybody's schedule, so, I mean, if it's, if it's next Thursday, then, you know, that, that's great. So if that gives you enough time, because, you know, frankly, you, there is some digestion time to go through it, right? And I, I think the thing I want to do is just make sure that we're kind of getting through the, the, the tough spots the easiest way, which I think is going to be more discussion than, you know, stuff trying to go back and forth between lawyers. So anyway, just, just a thought there.
Well, and I, I will also admit, we don't, we have not done a development agreement in how many years?
A lot.
A long time. Not on weekends with the last one.
So therefore, we just need to come up to speed on what a development agreement needs to contain.
From our side, for sure.
So there, there's that too.
Yeah, and, and I think your, I think, I think your legal counsel there, Dave, can help you out because my guess is they've done quite a few of these, so.
That would be nice, so maybe that will then depend, I mean, do we need a pre-meeting before we have a meeting?
I think for you and I, if our goal can be this week to have our reviews done, comments and questions to our legal council by this week, that's a, I think that's a reasonable expectation. And then, you know, if, if our council gets it on Friday, for example, and comes back and says, guys, this is, we're going to have to do some research on this, we're going to have to have some discussion, then we probably will, we need to reach out to Steve, Ben, and Bucky, just let them know, hey, we don't think the Thursday's going to work, and we're sorry, we're not at that next council meeting. Let's, we'll keep you in the loop if, if that happens, but I'm hopeful that we can get something from our council that says, yeah, you know, I appreciate your questions, we'll go through that, and maybe have a, an hour or so call with the three of us, and then we're ready for a Thursday meeting.
Yeah, and, and Paul, even if we aren't ready to accomplish all of it, if we're ready to accomplish some of it, I think that would be, you know, a, a good start, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is traffic control. And so Craig was going to look at some signs, did you have a chance to do that?
Yeah, I think it was data gathering, probably looking around 3,000. The ones on Summit Creek Drive are in their development agreement.
We can't hear what he's saying.
You need to come up to a mic, sorry, sorry, thank you. He said that if we get data collecting signs, they're about $3,000, and then he said, you can take that.
Yeah, and then it shows that there's two of them in the developer's agreement that you guys have turned in to us. There's two traffic calming signs in there. Is that something you guys are thinking of doing, Steve?
That, that was, sorry, so this is Ben, that was just after our, our meeting with Bob and Doral, we included those in there just so they were noted.
And, and maybe we only need to do one that does data gathering, I mean, we can move it throughout the city and then go from there.
Okay, so.
It does both directions.
So let's get some advice from our resident traffic engineer.
Yeah.
Jeremy, what are you saying? You, you can use my mic.
All of us saying is that you'll want two signs, one for each direction for traffic calming.
Coming up.
I, I don't know how to ask this question. Why do we want to have data gathering? What, what advantage is that? What's the disadvantage? Does it, is it going to pay for itself in some form or fashion?
Yes, please.
So to, to clarify on that, I don't know that data gathering is necessarily the right term. My understanding is it would be the driver feedback sign. So it gathers data by telling you what your speed is and flashing at you that you need to slow down.
Does it tell you how many people exceeded the speed limit?
Yeah, if you set it up that way.
Yeah, it'll show average speed on the, on the streets. And that's what you mean by data gathering? Yeah, but no, no camera. And then there's another version that just gives the driver feedback. It'll just flash, there's nothing really to them.
Yeah, so an example of this would be if you've driven up the canyon in Elkridge, or toward Elkridge, I guess, there's one there.
And what, what's the difference in the price? 3,000 for the data gathering? I think it was about $500 difference. 500 different? And we, we probably need at least, well, because we're talking Woodland Hills also, so now we're looking at four? Is, is that a reasonable assumption?
You mean four signs, so one, one on Woodland Hills Drive and one in Summit Creek Drive, each direction.
One set on.
Okay, I have a question actually for Jeremy about the, you said you kind of want one going each direction. I think that in some places in the city, like on Woodland Hills Drive, it's probably not as big of a deal coming uphill as it is going downhill. Am I, is that just my ignorance?
That's a good question, you could do it just in one direction. I think on Summit Creek, it would be good to have both directions, I think you see speeding both ways. Woodland Hills Drive is maybe a different situation. I do think you get some people driving fast up the hill, but certainly downhill is the more concerning one, so.
Well, I mean, I mean, for me, when I'm just driving and not paying attention, which doesn't happen very much anymore, but I know as soon as you take your foot off the gas when you're coming uphill, you're slowed down in like, you know, 20 feet. But going down that hill, if you're sailing along, it's a lot longer to slow down, so.
What if we, what if we did two, what, what if I asked two questions? One, what if we got three? See how that does, and then maybe some future date, doing an analysis and say, do we need a third one, or do we, I mean, a fourth one, or do, and do we need some in other areas because they've done such a great job? And then the other question is kind of a bold question, and that is, would Summit Creek be interested in participating in the purchase? Yeah, but, but what I understood Ben to say is that that was not really a proposal, am I, am I correct, Ben? That, that, that it was just based upon our conversation that this is what we wanted to do, then that you added it because that's what we said we wanted to do?
Yeah, it was just a representation for the overall plan, just so that we, you know, we were trying to capture everything. You know, if it wasn't done, that's fine, we just, we just wanted to have, have everything represented on the plan just to show the city, you know, what our efforts were along with the city to help with traffic calming.
And does anybody from Summit Creek want to answer my question about participation? I'm a little bit bold here, but.
I think what, Bob, I think what we're hoping to do with the development agreement is work out all the issues and all the questions all together instead of piecing them out like this.
So then are you saying you want to wait?
What do you mean?
Do you want to wait for the development agreement and all that to be in place before we put in the traffic calming on Summit Creek?
Well, maybe I misunderstood, I thought I heard that the goal is to try to get it done this year, right?
Yeah, but I'm just trying to get it done this month. Does that make any sense? I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I mean, are, are we only doing the signs, or we, I mean, we talked about some other traffic calming stuff as well, right?
But right now, all we're talking about is, is the tracking, traffic calming signs. So, so the two of them, as I understand, would cost around $6,000, and, and I'm not, you know, I, I asked the question, I asked it the way I did very specifically, participate, that doesn't mean that I'm asking you to pay the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, we're willing to participate, I, I think one of the things that we feel like we keep running into is, you know, with the development agreement, we're just hoping to get all of the issues that are looming out there all wrapped up in one agreement that we all agree to and not kind of piecing them out. But to answer that simple question, like city wants to put those up tomorrow, yeah, we're willing to participate in that.
Great, because, because I, I totally agree with you, Bucky. I, from my perspective, I'd like to see the big picture also. And so I, I think that I have the same feelings you do on the development agreement.
Yeah, thank you.
So with that, I think all of my questions are answered about what we want to do and maybe see what we do, is this something we need to talk about in city council, or can we just make the decision here? It doesn't require a vote, right?
No, because it's, because it's not, it's not over $10,000.
Yeah, you, the mayor can do it, I, I think that we ought to, you know, may, maybe on the Summit Creek ones, do a 50/50 split on that, and then we do at least one on Woodland Hills, if not two.
And Bob, when it comes time to place those, I'm, I know you'll do this, but we'd like to, you know, to have a little input just so we're not impeding, you know, drive, potential driveways, or, you know what I mean, just so that they're, they're located in proper locations, so.
Absolutely, and I would like to ask Jeremy Cyril, our resident traffic engineer, if he would like to participate in that also, and that way I think we can have a, a win-win for everybody.
I'd be happy to help with that.
Sorry for volunteer you.
You've been volunteered.
I, I don't know if this is helpful, but I do have a short info sheet on these that I can share.
Yes.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Jody, I'm going to try and share my screen here.
And I guess while you're doing that, Chris, do, do you have any idea where we might come up with three, $3,000?
I sent him a text just a minute ago, so these should be checking. Thanks, Bob.
I'm surprised Dave didn't ask that question already.
So I, I don't want to take too much time on this because I know there's a lot going on, but these are some info sheets I'm putting together for UDOT, this is just a draft, but these driver feedback signs or rate or speed signs have been shown to, there's been studies done, they show that they lower speeds between two to 10 miles per hour, they're under $10,000. UDOT costs, things cost a little more because they have to do other things, but, right? And they have, studies have also shown that they reduce crashes up to 5%. And they've got some good advantages. Anyway, so I, I thought those statistics were interesting though, that studies have shown up to, up to 10 miles per hour and that they do reduce crashes by 5%.
Are they using solar or do they need?
They, they do both, so they have solar ones. It's better if they're directly wired, and I think there's power along Summit Creek Drive that you could do that? Maybe not.
That's going to bring the cost up, isn't it?
It, it would, so you can do solar, the problem is, after, I don't know, five to 10 years, there's maintenance and replacements that need to be done. Yeah, they, solar usually works pretty good even with the snow because as long as it's not in the shade, right, if we don't put it under a tree or something, but even, the power that it needs is very little, and so that solar can keep that going for quite a bit, so.
Mayor, this is Carrie, I have a question for Jeremy. Jeremy, you said that they need to be on both sides, so would it be to our benefit to just get all four right now, two for, for each road, one going one up the hill, one going down, so it's consistent?
Carrie, that's kind of what I was working with Summit Creek, and if they're, if they would agree to do 50%, then that means that we could, we, we in effect are only paying for three signs and we would get a total of four? That doesn't make sense, that's not right, anyway.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're actually paying for the second, by them participating, we can then get the, the second sign for Woodland Hills, that's what I really mean.
But, okay, so, so you're saying that you would like them to purchase one of the two signs that are Summit Creek signs, and then we would pay for the other plus the two on Woodland Hills Drive?
Right, but then, but I'm asking Jeremy if we, if he thinks it's worth our money to put an uphill sign on Woodland Hills Drive, depending on where we.
Yeah, it, it does depend on where you put it. Going down, I think the answer is, you know, obviously you want it kind of in the middle of the hill, right? But coming up, you could do it just past the curve here, past the city building, along where it kind of flattens out.
And where the speed limit lowers.
And where the speed limit lowers, right? You're supposed to slow down there, and I think people don't as much, so, so it depends where you put it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will move forward with that if we have a, if, we will spend budget money that we have, not budget money that we don't.
Yeah.
And we'll work with Summit Creek on, and on placements and.
Steve, Ben, and Bucky, appreciate your willingness to.
And thanks, Jeremy.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I think I have the next topic, right?
Yes, you do, so, so we will move on, and, yeah, we, I, I blew it, and so did Jody, we just, we knew he was coming tonight and then we didn't get it on the agenda. He is going to talk to us about a possible trail grants we could get, and I was actually really excited about this, so I don't. So thanks for coming, Jeremy.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. All right, so as, as many of you know, I worked with the planning commission a couple years ago to update the general plan, and as part of that general plan, it does include a trail from the mailboxes, or it includes a planned trail, the mailboxes up Woodland Hills Drive, and then down Summit Creek with a connection up to the park. And Woodland Hills is unique in that if you start thinking about destinations in Woodland Hills, right, you've got mailboxes, you've got the two churches, you've got the You've got mailboxes, you've got the two churches, you've got the city center, you've got the park, you've got Summit Creek. If you look at that, this truck connects all of them. The only other destination that I can think of in Woodland Hills that it doesn't connect is Switchbacks. And frankly, I'd love a connection up to that too, but that's a conversation for another day.
We don't want to go there.
But, um, but this, this connects, like I said, the major destinations in Woodland Hills. And, um, it would be great to have a way to, to walk down to the mailbox or to the church or to the city center, you know, for city council meetings, whatnot. Um, or up to the park. These are all, you know, great things. So this is in the plan, um, has been for some time. The MAG also did a study a couple of years ago as well. Uh, it's called the South County Active Transportation Plan. And this, uh, involved a lot of the communities, uh, you know, Payson, Elkridge, Salem, Santaquin, Woodland Hills. And it developed recommendations for active transportation plan for each of those communities. Well, you'll notice that Woodland Hills mirrors the general plan, right? And that's because we coordinated with them and, and met with them. And in fact, they had their consultant team come out and meet with us on site and we walked along Woodland Hills Drive and looked at it. So, so this is in not only our plan, but a regional plan, okay? So because of that, uh, we could qualify potentially for a grant, through MAG. Uh, they call that the tip or the transportation improvement projects. Uh, Mayor, I'm guessing you've been involved with this in the past when you vote on projects? Okay, um, each of the mayors, I believe, have been, have been involved with that in the past. So this happens every two years and, uh, you guys asked me at a good time because the selection for this is coming up.
It's this month.
So they are due, sorry, the project, let me scroll down here.
Proposals.
The proposals are due November 1st. Okay, so that's pretty soon. Now, that doesn't mean we have to have it all fleshed out. That just means we have to tell them we intend to submit on this and we can go meet with them and talk about it. So, um, this is some information from MAG. I'm not going to go through all of it, but just some highlights. Uh, these projects are selected every two years. Selection cycle begins now. These projects won't be funded until 2025 or 2026. So don't, don't feel like this is going to get built next year. It's not, right? This is, this is several years out. They have about 80 to 90 million to, um, to fund these different projects. And this isn't just active transportation. They, they fund roadway, um, planning, all this stuff. And it's for the, all of MAG, so that's all of Utah County, Wasatch County. I don't think it has Juab County.
Summit. It's.
I thought Summit was W F C. I think it's Wasatch and.
There's three, three counties.
Yeah, anyway, it's, it's a large area, right? So there's a lot of other people applying for these grants as well. One thing to note, uh, cities would be responsible for a 6.77% match. In my mind, that's really good. They'll pay over 93% of the project, right? So if you can get someone else to pay for 93%, that's, that's great.
Well, and they, they, I actually was going to talk about this a little in my report tonight, but we can just, um, they explained to us that that match requirement is based on federal land in your state. So a lot of states are paying 20% matches. But in Utah, we have a very low match rate because of the.
It is really low. We would have to talk about this, but there's been talk here about a development agreement, right? If, if Summit Creek was willing to participate in a trail along Summit Creek Drive, maybe some of that could count towards our match, right? So that, I, I think there's options there too, uh, that we, that could be discussed.
Right, they're pretty flexible about how, what can match.
Right, right. So I think that's something that should at least be talked about. So they go through a whole selection process. I don't, I don't want to go through all the details here. But, uh, the schedule is probably important.
Well, and, uh, Jeremy.
Yeah.
Specifically, the trails we're talking about here, these would be part of the alternate transportation trails, meaning they would likely be asphalted. They would be meant for bikes and walking as well, but.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Dave. I think it's good to clarify that. So when I say trail, I don't mean a, a dirt walking path that, that we're hiking on, right? We're talking a, a probably a 10-foot wide asphalt trail that would allow, you know, bikers to pass each other comfortably.
So, so, and that dovels into my question is, what do they pay for? And is there any big items that they don't pay for?
Great question. So I'll want to confirm this. In the, in the past, I know that they didn't cover right away for active transportation. They did for normal roads, but my understanding is that that has changed. And so I believe they would cover, assuming we pay our match, uh, the design and construction and right away.
And purchase right away.
Yes, they, they did tell us that the other night and I think they said it included trails too.
That's my understanding.
Property.
Jeremy, Jeremy, this is Carrie. I have a question too. So, um, I like this idea. This is only Woodland Hills Drive though, correct? And that would be in front of people's property, not behind. And I, I have citizens who contact me who are concerned about trails in their backyard. And I support trails that go along the roadway, um, but not necessarily behind. And I want to make sure prior that it is, um, for the purchase of the easements as well as the planning and construction.
Yeah, that, that's a great question, Carrie. So you're, you're correct. It would parallel the road. It would, it would, at least what we have planned is up Woodland Hills Drive, uh, connection up past my house toward the park and then, um, down Summit Creek Drive. So, um, let, let's talk about what that would look like. If we go to the general plan. Okay, so here is, here is, uh, what our cross-sections are planned for, right? If you look, they're both 56 feet wide, okay? So total right of way is the same. And my understanding, some of the older roads are only, the right of way is only 50 feet, but I think the newer ones are 56. So we, we'd have to, we'd have to research the right of way and what's available. But ideally, um, this is what it would look like. Our collector roads, we've planned a trail for. Our collector roads include Woodland Hills Drive and Summit Creek Drive. Okay, so we're gonna, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit on this. You'll notice they have this 10-foot path or trail here. And what this shows is the, the ditch in between here. Well, I think what we would probably need to do is pipe the ditch and have the trail on top of that just because this takes so much space. So I, I think what we would suggest is piping that on one side of the road with the trail over the top. Hopefully people won't be as upset about losing a ditch as part of their property, if that makes sense. I know right of way is always going to be a big question, so let's look at the parcel map. One thing to note, uh, and the parcel map's not super accurate, right? But it gives, it gives you an idea. You'll notice that Woodland Hills Drive meanders back and forth in our right of way, right? Sometimes it's really close to one side, sometimes it's really close to the other side. So there, there's going to be locations where we already have enough room on one, on one side of the road to fit a trail. And there's going to be others where we don't have any room at all, right? And it's just going to take some right of way research to go through and look at every single parcel, see what, what's available and what's not, if we can. So it's going to take some design work, right? And that would have to be part of the grant. And it would take, and, and the city would need to be responsible for this, but it would take some right of way purchases of, of that area, whether it's the ditch or whatnot, to, to make that happen, so.
I mean, we've, we've also talked about improving our drainage along our roads.
And this would help with that.
This could certainly help, at least along Woodland Hills Drive. Um, Summit Creek Drive's right now in pretty good shape. I say it that way because Thousand Oaks used to be in great shape and it's not anymore. So anyway.
It would also help along, uh, Lofer, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm on Lofer and this would include a connection up to the, to the park. And you're right, our, our ditches used to be really good. Uh, ever since the sewer project, they're filled in. I mean, the sewer project filled them in.
So, but this is a good way to get several miles of drainage taken care of.
So regardless, there's a lot of things that we could add to it, but I think what we're talking about tonight is just letting Jeremy apply for the grant.
Correct.
Yeah, so what I would.
Is that the idea?
What I would suggest, um, and I'm going to come back to this. Um, you'll notice the draft idea application is due the first of November. Then they have an ID, idea review meeting with NPO staff. So once we get that submitted, it would be good if me and, and someone on the council or, or mayor could go meet with someone at MAG and say, this is what we'd like to do. And they can work through the details with this and, and they can say, you know what? There's no chance you're going to get this. Or they could say, I think you have a great shot. Let's work together and put this together and, and flesh it out and get some cost estimates, so. So that, that's what I would recommend is that we at least go to that point and get MAG's feedback to tell us, you know, where we stand.
Yeah, yes.
I think that's excellent.
I, I don't think it costs us anything and.
Except blood, sweat and tears out of Jeremy.
Yeah.
You say that so casually.
They're gonna either say yes or they're gonna say no. And, and if they say no, it's not going to change anything that we already have. If they say yes, we've got a, another great opportunity to, uh, add some, uh, quality of life features to our city.
Well, and even if it doesn't go well this year, we've started and we could try again in two years.
That's correct.
You know, honestly, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions?
So, so this doesn't require a vote, so we just say, Jeremy?
Just part of the work session, he wanted to present what he's doing and it's a great idea.
And I'm very interested in participating with you.
I think this is a great idea. Jeremy, can you remind me what the date is that that's due?
Yeah, the, uh, the idea application is due November 1st and then they would have meetings with MAG the week of the 8th.
And then the final applications are due December 2nd.
Yep. And just for total transparency, uh, this shows February 3rd. Um, but you actually wouldn't know for sure that you got funded until June or July of next year.
Right, right. And just, so since we're talking about this kind of stuff, um, these come up. I mean, you know, over two years, we do this at MAG and, um, there are, we don't have generally roads projects that we're, but we have roads that a lot of our people drive on. So I'm always paying attention to what they're doing and because, you know, we care about the interchange. The new I-15 interchange in Spanish Fork is going to make a difference for our people. And the road that they're trying to put in from on Elkridge Drive, that'll go all the way through to I-15. And those things will, you know, even though they're not in our city, they're certainly of, uh, interest and benefit to our citizens, so.
Isn't, isn't this how Spanish Fork funded a lot of their trails?
Yeah, thank you, Bob, for saying that. Um, so Spanish Fork, the, many of you have walked on the Spanish Fork River Trail. They funded that all through MAG grants. And, uh, that could be something that we consider, but they didn't do it all in one fell swoop, right? They did it in phases. And once you get the first phase funded, MAG wants to finish it, right? And so you get the next phase funded, the next phase. So we could consider breaking this up into doing, uh, let's say from the mailboxes to the city center and then from the city center up to the park and then Summit Creek Drive and do three phases, right? Uh, that makes the cost not so huge, it breaks it up.
Jeremy, this is Carrie. I have a, another question with that then. Because, um, both Salem and Spanish Fork would like us to connect our trail system, is it advantageous to us to use that as part of our application process to have something from their city in support?
That, that's a great question. I think it would be great to show how we could potentially tie into their system. That would help our, our application. Uh, I don't know that we'd want to necessarily include part, you know, part of the trail in Salem per se, but we, we'd want to show how it would connect to the regional network.
That it could eventually.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, Payson's got it almost to the church, the new stadium. Or I should say Elkridge.
Oh, yeah, following along 11200. Yep, exactly, we'd want to show our connection to that.
And so, and the way these projects get funded is that the, um, whole committee that does this takes all the projects and ranks them by importance and, and effectiveness and. Anyway, they just rank them, you know, one to 120. And then they take the money that they have and just go down the list until they're out of money. But then sometimes if a project fails or doesn't pan out, then they grab the next two or three on the list. And, and it, it's not a perfectly linear process because there are some trade around. Some projects that will qualify for, uh, federal money or UDOT money that, UDOT money they'll swap with UDOT because UDOT will take the money. A- anyway, it's, it's not a perfectly linear process, but it's pretty good. And a couple of years ago, there was a road up in Lehigh that just wasn't ready. And so then all of a sudden, Santaquin and two other places got their projects. So, um, that's kind of how it, so really, it's not like they're going to tell us right now, yes or no, but they'll say it's worth it or it's, it's just not worth it, you know, but.
So do we have any idea how Summit Creek feels about this? I don't know if this is something that they have in their plan or we, or what, but hopefully they have paid attention to the longer age plan and, and have accommodated that. And it'd be nice to, to hear what they, uh, think about this. I don't know if tonight's the right night or, or if they want to think about it, get input, but I, I would like to, um, to, to listen to what Summit Creek has to say.
Did you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't know Summit Creek's feelings on it, but I do know that when Dave and I were on the planning commission, we felt bad that a trail didn't get put in along Summit Creek Drive because that was in the plan even before that all got approved and it got missed, so.
This whole, this whole, and again, I emphasize, it's a transportation trail, not a walking wooded trail. But that was in the previous general plan as well. So all the way back in the mid 2000s, this was part of the plan. And yeah, we blew an opportunity when it came to putting together, um, the development plan for Summit Creek to get this put in as part of the development. Um, now, to be fair, that's not Steve and Ben and.
Correct.
That was a different, a different group, but, uh, so it'd be interesting to see, you know, if, if they would be on board with it. I know some of their residents expressed, um, that was one of the reasons why they wanted traffic calming is because they feel like walking on the road is dangerous, which it is.
So, so at the right time, I, I'd really love to, to hear their input.
Jeremy, this is Carrie again. I have one more question. Is, uh, what did you say our match was?
It's 6.77%.
All right, and can any of that match be in kind or does it have to be, um, cash?
No, they're very flexible. It can be in kind.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. Thanks for being willing. Thanks for being clear, um, tonight.
I understand it does include the pipe for drainage purposes if we choose to do drainage with it, so.
You could, yeah.
I think it's win-win.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And possibly win-win-win.
That's right.
All right, um, moving on, next thing, the policies, procedures and disclosures. City Park Pavilion and Trail Use Policy. We talked a while back about putting up a sign with all the park rules. And then we got, what was the thing we got hung up on, Jody? Oh, that's right. Overnight camping in the park because, um, we, I think we didn't want to just ban it because every once in a while we'll have a group that's organized, you know? But we, and so then we just, it just fell off the radar. So I propose that we go ahead, adopt the policies that we already, and the rules for the park that we already talked about and set that one aside, fix it, you know, and we can fix that part, um, later. But let's get the first policies on the book so that.
Mayor, this is Carrie.
Yes, Carrie.
I have a question. I, I got in our packet, the pavilion reservation form. I also got the City of Woodland Hills metal park rules. These seem to be very old and outdated and I, I don't. These seem to be very old and outdated and I, I don't think that we would agree to everything that's on there at this time. But I do think that the things that are on the pavilion reservation form, um, capture those, um, park and pavilion rules.
Great, yeah, that's actually what I was kinda referring to is the, the things that we had just were saying that we were gonna put on the sign, um, that we use those as our rules and then we can, I, I suggest that at our next meeting, we revisit the overnight camping policy. My suggestion would be that it would be something to the effect of, um, overnight camping can be approved for organized groups if, you know, with previous approval from this city administration, pardon?
By permit only.
Yeah, yeah. So something like that. So we, we can fix that, but I think we should adopt these, um, the pavilion rental, the rules on that right now as our park rules and then we can fix it later. So I don't know if, if anybody has, um, further-
Okay, so just, so tonight's vote will just be on the pavilion reservation form and the rules that are printed on that and not on the other paper. Cause I don't feel comfortable with the other paper right now.
Not either.
So this form does start a fee for residents and before there wasn't a fee. Oh, I didn't understand that. Okay, good. Didn't wanna change it. Okay. Gotta go to the park. Okay.
Right, um, the next thing is conflict of interest disclosures and we need to get that done. I think Jody gave you each one near desk that you need to fill out and sign and return to her. And then the employee policy manual, I am still working on that and I got derailed a little bit this week. Um, we've got the fraud assessment that Christie, have you received that recently that? Or, I mean, I think it's due pretty quickly again, the, that the state's requiring now, the fraud assessment thing. And, um, there are a bunch of policies that if we have in place in the city, we score a lot higher on the fraud assessment. So I've been work, got a little bit derailed working on those this week. So I will, at our next meeting, I will have the employee policy manual ready so that I can send it to you before the meeting and you can look at it. And, um, the couple of job descriptions that we haven't approved yet, those will be included and these, um, some of these policies that will go with the fraud assessment done also. So, um, so we will move on beyond that. Um, let's talk about the meet, the candidates night. I think it was good and bad. Um, I think it was bad because the, I think the problem is that there just isn't ever enough time, you know? Um, there, there are a lot of concerns, there were a lot of questions that we just didn't have time to address. And, um, that's hard, but I think it was, uh, well done. I think people, uh, we were grateful to Senator Bramble for coming and moderating for us and, um, we had all our candidates there and so, uh, is there any other input about that or just things that you'd like to say?
I, I wanna say, Carrie, for inviting Senator Bramble. He, he did a marvelous job. With a tough, with-
Tough crowd.
No, not a tough crowd. He did a marvelous job with a tough task.
Well, sure.
The crowd was great. Um, the task was hard because he had to digest a lot of different questions and try and come up with relevant questions that kinda threaded the questions that were being asked and I, and I thought he did a great job.
I would like to add to that. Um, I thought it was a great night as well. Um, I know that for residents who didn't see it, we put a link in, um, this week's newsletter to be able to view it again on YouTube. We also put a link to all of the questions that were not asked. And if you would like, if any citizen would like the answers to those questions, we also, um, put all of the candidates' emails and phone numbers so you can contact them directly to get your answers.
I was gonna say, the reverse of that isn't true, Carrie. There were some questions out there, for example, specific to individuals and some of us individuals want to find that person, I don't know who they are, and answer specifically the question they didn't get asked. And I don't know how to facilitate that, but-
I, I think that because we put the questions out there, those citizens now have your contact information and can contact you directly to say, we didn't have enough time, there was time constraints, can you please answer that now? So that's, that's the way that we got all the questions still out there to particular, to everyone. And then residents can take it upon themselves to ask you additional questions. Or you can post it on your website or your, or send your emails out or if you have your own, um, Facebook page as a candidate, we don't want the candidate responses on our city page. Um, that's not really appropriate, but it could be a two-way between the candidate and the residents.
And I don't know if we have names on all the questions.
Okay, oh, somewhere on-
That's what you're asking.
Okay, that, I, I kinda was, but as long as the candidates that are in this room are happy with the way it's running, yeah, if they wanna get ahold of us, I want them to. So, and I think you feel the same way. Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks for participating, all of you that did. Um, the next thing on this, um, agenda is responses to the letter from the mayor. So, uh, we, I did send this letter out with, we, um, spent a lot of time with some of the, some of the council members, the city attorneys, me going back and forth, making sure everything was, um, accurate as much as we could, just trying to get information out to the citizens that, that are just wondering what's going on and hearing a lot of, you know, rumblings and scuttlebutt and, um, personally, I got, uh, quite a few, uh, responses from people saying thank you for, you know, but then, um, we also, also all got a letter in the mail, that was very unhappy with this letter. So, uh, I don't know. I think the people that are angry are gonna stay angry. The people that are wondering, I think it helped them. I hope, I hope it helped them. We did our best to try and, um, explain things that are going on so that they understand without, given names or being attacking or, you know, try to just be, um, objective as much as I could. Uh, any input from you? And I mean, I hope I, you guys requested me to write this letter, I hope I did. You know, hope I did what you were, had, had wanted. Um, any input?
I just wondered what the next step might be, if any, you know, maybe, um, I personally was surprised. I didn't hear the, the positive responses because I didn't, I didn't see those, but, but I'm glad you had some. I, I just wonder if we need to do anything else. I, I kinda prefer we not, but I don't know.
I, I had citizens who contacted me who appreciated the letter from the mayor, uh, for clarifying some of the things that were, have been going on. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that legally that, um, have been maybe, uh, misconstrued, um, from what the city standpoint is and, uh, they thought that it was very clear and helpful. I haven't had any positive responses, uh, to me from the letter that went out anonymously, which we don't know who sent that, but, um, so I think that it's time that we've said our piece and we just go forward.
That's what-
Yeah, I, I think that the letter that you sent out, Mayor, was good. I don't know of anything that, uh, was inaccurate. I think that, um, since it was anonymous that we shouldn't respond to it. If it's not important enough to put your name on it, it's not important enough for us to answer.
Any other?
The only encouragement I would give all of the residents is just to realize that, um, so, we've been dealing with a lot of this detail for quite some time. And, um, I would imagine if I were a resident, I probably wouldn't want to deal with the detail.
That's why they have us.
And so, but also just realize that, um, there's, um, far less conspiracy than they might want to enjoy.
Yes.
I'll just say it that way.
Yes.
Right. All right, thank you. Thank you all. Um, we need to, uh, Mark Brecken has been serving on the South Utah Valley Municipal Water Association Board and the Mountain Yuba Water District as our representative. Um, he and his wife are leaving to go on an LDS mission and so he will be resigning from those boards and we need to appoint a new representative. Um, traditionally, we've had a city council member do that. But Mark was super invested in water and he's got a lot of expertise and history and so he was a great fit for us. Um, but, so I guess what I'm asked, I'm asking tonight, does one of you wanna do that? Or should we look and see if we've got another citizen that would be good to follow up on?
This is Carrie. I, I think that, uh, either if, if a council person doesn't wanna do it, I would suggest that we ask someone from the, um, Public Works, uh, Committee to take on that responsibility if, if they're wanting to.
I could do it. It's not that, it's not that many meetings.
And you're doing water in the city, right?
And I'm doing water anyway, so, um, I, I, I can do it.
Are you gonna, well, I guess you're not doing a county assignment right now, are you? Cause you had a lot of city, heavy city load.
But hey, hoping with the exception of building that some of the city things are kinda settling down.
Yes, yes. Well, if you're willing to do that, that would be great. I, I do think it's super important. They're not, it's not a huge commitment of time, but honestly, I think 30 years from now, what we do with water will have a bigger impact. What we're doing right now with water is gonna have a bigger impact than almost any of the other things that we were working on. Because water is gonna get more and more, um, fractious and important and I, I don't know, I, I worry that at some point in the not-too-distant future, it's gonna become a bloodbath. Because we've just got, you know, California's coming for Utah's water. North, North Utah's coming for South Utah's water. North Utah counties coming for South Utah county. You know, we just all have to protect our water, realizing though that everybody needs, needs water. So we just need to make sure that it's well managed, so. All right, Dave will, um, I'll just, then if you will take that assignment, I'll give it to you. We don't have to, the council doesn't have to take any action, um, since I'm just giving you a council assignment, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave, for doing that. That's a, that's a big relief for our city.
It is.
Thanks.
I think, um, that next, at our next meeting, we ought to, uh, do some kind of recognition to Beth because she's leaving and she's done a great service and, uh, maybe we should recognize Mark Brecken also because he's, so let's, let's plan on that. Jody, will you make a note for me? Cause otherwise my ball will just be dropped on the floor. Thank you. All right, public works update, Corbett. Well, you gotta have, you gotta be mic'd. Sorry.
The waterline project, the contractor's still got a few things to tie up. Uh, Ted is working with him closely to make sure that the punch list is complete and that everybody's satisfied. So, road projects, same thing. Uh, Ted's working with Geneva to make sure that we get all the loose ends tied up and taken care of. And then snow removal. Wonder if here, maybe it'll go back, maybe it'll go away for a while, but.
Here, we got all the salt and everything we need for this winter, I mean, all that prep stuff.
How much is it gonna snow?
I know, I know. But we, we've done the preparation that we normally do.
Yep.
Is that accurate?
I, I would say we've done better than we've done.
So the snow cream's all lined up?
Yeah, cause I was in the salt shed a couple of times today putting salt in the truck. And there's almost no room to get in the salt shed because it's floor to ceiling. Not, uh, 75% of the floor space is covered with salt.
Cool.
So it, it's, we, we, we're in good shape, especially if you compare it to the last couple of years. Yeah, well, I think we're, I think Corbett's got us, along with Craig, getting all of the equipment running and everything.
As much as I hate to say this, I think we should all hope that we need to use the salt this year.
Yeah.
Compared to previous years.
Yeah, we need the water. We need the moisture.
That makes us to see how the snow plowing with the new road, at least that part.
Yeah. It was very, very nice. You, you weren't bouncing all around and the plow wasn't jumping five feet up in the air when you, so it, yeah, it was, it was very nice.
Corbett, thanks for keeping us ahead on this and not-
Roads are a lot wider too.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, council reports. Doral, CWPP.
Craig and I haven't met and talked details about chipping this fall, but I think we'll look forward to chipping next spring and worry about that. I think, uh, at least that's my opinion unless he surprises me. Other than that, I don't have any updates.
Have, have you given any more, I, I'm sure you have, more thought to dumpsters again?
Yeah, if, if this weather clears, it gives me a good week.
Oh, there you go.
Cause I think the citizens really liked that and, and-
Can you please repeat what Craig said? We couldn't hear online.
Yes, sorry.
He said, we are going to, if the weather looks good again here this fall, he'll order some dumpsters and we will get you the dates.
Perfect. We'd like to put that in our, um, newsletter.
Yes.
Okay, great, good to know. Um, let's see, uh, Paul, animal shelter.
Uh, they postponed the meeting for this month, so we'll see what they do next.
All right, uh, Carrie, Utah Lake.
Lots going on at the lake. Um, some state money that's going in. The studies for water quality are continuing. Uh, we have a Provo River Delta Project tour coming up next week that we will be, um, going over that. It's going to be a really amazing, um, opportunity for residents to go and, and have access on some boardwalks around the lake and some other things that are happening there. And then with emergency management, uh, Utah County, our meeting will be on October 26th, uh, where all of the emergency managers from all the cities get together on a monthly basis. And, um, things have been going well there. I did wanna bring up one, uh, other topic that I normally talk about on another and that's with regards to communication. We've had some real issues with our community, um, Facebook page. It's kind of getting out of hand and in fact, the, the sheriff has had to get involved as residents are calling uh, to complain about other residents and harassment and, um, I would like the council, other council members to maybe, uh, whether publicly or if you want to just give me your ideas on ways that we might be able to bring our, our city together. We started the community page to allow people to say, you know, my daughter's selling apples because she's on the chair squad or there's the, my son's band concert is there or there's a lost dog or I have extra produce to set, to give away or, you know, real community type things. And it's turned into something that's, that people feel that they have to include law enforcement now, which is unfortunate. Um, we have never, ever censored anyone on that page, but we do have some rules. And I'm considering maybe adding some rules and I wanted to know your feedback.
So, being a person who actually like is on there quite a bit, I, I, I have not heard any reports of the sheriff having to be involved. Uh, this is the first I've heard of it. Um, that's unfortunate. Here's my gut feeling though. If we were to, like, let's say we were to get rid of that, um, as this, as, um, a city- a city-sponsored group, other groups would pop up. That's the nature of social media. So I don't know that I think what we have to do is we just have to ourselves be encouraging and encourage our residents to be nice.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanted to actually say something.
Is going to help.
Yeah, well, that's how I feel, Dave. I would like it to be self-regulated to where people felt comfortable in posting and comfortable in being members of that group to really truly share information without getting without the personal attack. So I will probably post something like that and then hopefully we can have people who will who want to contribute in a meaningful way to city dialogue.
Also, I'm a little concerned, Carrie, because I don't, I mean, I realize that we created it, but we created it because we locked down the other other Woodland Hills group as the official city, you know, voice or whatever you want to call it. I would, I would hesitate us calling that our, like, the city's group.
Well, it's not. It's the community group.
Right.
It's the community group, but it, but it, and, and we sometimes will share stuff from our official page to that page just to ease in communication. But again, there's some things that are happening on there and that are not healthy for our community. So we'll just, we'll just kind of keep it where it is. We have moderators who are just regular citizens, but they have felt harassed themselves. And so we would like, I would just like to put it on the public record that we are a community who, who have been able to come together in the past and there's a lot of different issues that are here. Again, reiterating that our city staff does not moderate the page. They do not, we do not pay them to answer questions. And as city council people, we don't have the time to do the same. And so it really is a sharing opportunity for those that would like to. If you have official questions, I would, I would like them to contact us as council people directly and/or to call the city offices, most importantly, if it's a city-related question rather than just the harassment that happens to come on, on that page because of frustration. So I just wanted to give everyone that heads up, but otherwise, Bob, you can continue with the next.
Great, thanks Carrie. All right, yes, 911 Dispatch and Solid Waste, Bob.
911 Meeting, first meeting for this summer will be held later this week. Solid Waste is, is moving forward with the new transfer station. The landfill out on the west side of the lake. We've recently signed a contract to harvest the methane gas out of the landfill. It's matured to the point where there's sufficient methane gas there and so we're in the process of installing the systems to, to capture that, but that's another element of recycling. And that's one of the reasons why the district has done away with special collection for green waste, because that goes into the landfill and that accelerates the production of methane gas. That's all.
Thank you.
I like where you put that, "matured."
I'm trying.
Okay, for me, SESD, so they recently instituted a new little rate increase because I'd done a system study on the whole system and basically to plan for the future to, you know, keep, keep things updated and current and do some, put some redundancy in so that if we have failures, they can keep the power going. Power rates now are kind of going up like everything else. They're exploding. So this rate increase is not going to provide as much money for the increase, for the improvements in the system, but has kept them from going in the hole.
Just a piece of feedback, personal feedback. The way they implemented the billing was terrible.
Okay.
Having to receive two different bills with two different account numbers is just sloppy.
I'll take that back.
They could have done that with a computer system that didn't require two different account numbers. Because I, I, I got a late fee. Because I paid using the previous account number.
Right.
And I ended up with a credit on that one and a past due bill on the other one and I'm just like, come on.
Right.
This is just sloppy.
So, um, did you call and get them to take their late fee off? I mean, you shouldn't have to, but I mean.
So that I could understand what in the world they were doing. And, you know, I mean, the person that answered the question was nice enough, but still, I
Right.
It just was sloppy.
That's good feedback. Okay.
I'm on solar. My last bill was $54. And of that, about $38 were fees. Part of that is because you get two bills and you get assessed fees on both bills. I think that that's needs to be looked at.
You're getting two bills because you're on solar?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how to
One, one bill is nothing but fees. And then another bill has the pluses and the minuses, plus the fees all over again.
Right, okay. That's good feedback.
They just are doing everything kind of backwards to the way that people nowadays expect things to be done. And I appreciate what they needed to do as far as a rate increase. I mean, I, I don't appreciate it, but I understand.
Right, right.
But for them to do their billing the way they did was just
Okay, that's, okay, that's, that's good to know. That's good feedback and I will take that back to them. MAGCog, we, the things I wanted to report on, we talked about when Jeremy was up here, mostly just that they're just starting this process to, for the next projects bids. And so we were gonna hopefully be able to take advantage of that for trails. There's a good chance. So that's, could be a very positive thing. And again, like I said, even if we don't make the cut this time, it's, it's done. We can improve it and try it again in two more, two more years, so. All right, we, is there anything else that anybody wants to talk about or needs to talk about during this work session? All right, let's see. It is almost 7:45. Let's, let's reconvene at 7:50 and we've got people that came for the swearing-in, so we will, at 7:50 we'll reconvene in our I will convene our regular city council meeting. I'm Mayor Wendy Prey. This is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. And this is the City of Woodland Hills City Council Meeting. We have everyone on our council in attendance. Everybody is here except for Carrie Malkovich and she is joining us through Zoom, so we are all here tonight. And we will begin our meeting. I will ask Paul MacArthur if he'd be willing to lead us in the pledge and Doral Kinniston if he'd be willing to offer an invocation.
Al Rice, please.
Wait a minute. Is that a problem? Somebody stole the flag! Yes. For the meeting the other night. Yeah, exactly. Texas will be fine.
Way to go.
Look at him not letting it touch the floor.
Look at that.
Thank you. Awesome.
Now we have a flag. Please repeat. Pledge and lead is the me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this evening for the many who have come to the city center and joined us in this meeting. We are grateful for the opportunity we have to live here. We're grateful for those that sacrifice time and effort to make this city a better place. We are fortunate to live in this community with each other and we pray that that will help us make decisions that will make this city even better. We ask thy Spirit to be with us. Let me say this, and then Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Doral. First thing on the agenda is public comment. Jody, did you have anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, we've got Wayne Franson.
I wanted to bring to your all attention a problem that a resident pointed out to me of a traffic hazard at the roundabout. It's gotten grown, large trees over the years and you can't see across it. And they almost had an accident down there with another car coming around. And because of the high trees and other foliage there, they didn't see it. And I think as you look at roundabouts, their, their recommendation is that vegetation be kept at a low level so you can see across them and see cars that are entering and exiting the roundabout. So I just wanted to bring that to council's attention and trees are nice. We have a lot of them, but I don't think they belong in a, in a traffic circle down there, which is a real potential hazard, so, thank you.
So, just on that note, with the budget that we have for landscaping around the building here, we have considered freshening up the roundabout. And we can include in that of removing the trees and putting in fresh shrubs that are will be low and that type of thing. So that's good input. Thanks, Wayne.
And I think we could have a couple of trees, just not full of trees.
Yeah, well, whatever is the right thing. We'll look and see what kind of code is, there is there and we'll support the code.
Good, good input. Any other input, I mean, any other public comment, Jody? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We've got two sets of meeting, meeting minutes and two sets of financials.
I move that we adopt the minutes as written from August 24th and September 14th, 2021 and July 2021 Finance and August 2021 Finance as presented.
Okay, I have a motion from Ottley and a second from MacArthur to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have our previous EMS captain, Beth Wilding, has resigned and we are going to, Rachel Skinner has agreed to be our new EMS captain and we are thrilled to have her, so we would like to swear her in before, should we, Craig? Chief Northup, do you want to make a comment before the swearing-in or after? Okay.
You won't get any word in edgewise once.
We also have, we've got quite a few members from the Salem ambulance team here tonight, I think, and Karen Booth. Are you the chairman, are you the captain there? Okay, I don't know what your official title is. Okay, sorry. Forgive my ignorance. What about, yeah, what about Her Royal Highness? Is that good? I kind of prefer that title. Anyway, do you have anything you would like to say also? Okay, Chief Northup, why don't you come make a couple of comments and then we'll turn the, turn a few moments over to Karen Booth and then we'll swear you in, Rachel. Rachel, come stand, come stand up here while he's talking. Come stand up here while he's talking.
Yeah, so they could see.
Well, I can't say enough about who our new EMS captain is. Since Rachel started with us back during the fire, she's just, she's been awesome to work with. Brings a lot of energy. You can see the support she has with Salem Group and our group. So, congratulations. You've earned it. You did a great job.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
So, um, when Beth told me that she was going to resign and she told me who she thought would be a good fit for taking her place, we, we talked about it. Rachel's kind of relatively new to the city. And, but she's just been gung ho, you know, she became, she came as an EMT. She just got her A license. And even Rachel kind of wondered like, you know, with this work. I think what's been great is both organizations, we've been meeting and training on a regular basis for quite a while now. Rachel is one of our training officers. And the good thing is, I think that since Woodland Hills is operating under Salem's license, we'll meet regularly and can make it work. So I, yeah, Rachel's, you know, she always does too much and she'd say, "Well, I'm not going to do fire" and then she ends up certifying and does fire. And then, you know, she's gone to A and now she's a captain on one of the crews and it's, so there's kind of no stopping her. I think that's a great thing. And I can kind of, you know, get her from being too over enthusiastic.
Well, then I wonder what will happen when you mean to do things.
We just feel sorry for Reed.
I don't.
He gets stepped on all the time. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for being here and we love that you're willing to partner with us. It's, it's been a real good thing for our city and I hope that we're, we benefit you. All right, Rachel. End of the square, right under the square. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
or affirm that I will support obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Congratulations, Rachel. We're glad that happened. Thank you, Rachel. Thanks for being willing to serve. I think you got involved, oh, you're going to have to sign this before you leave. She initially got involved with all this during the fire. And she and her husband showed up on scene and they were, they just did whatever needed to be done. If it was getting ice or picking up garbage, I mean, they just did anything and they were wonderful. They were wonderful. So we appreciate all that you've done. And are going to do. And, and all the things you're going to do that no one will ever know. They're appreciated. Thanks. All right, second thing on the agenda is the city park pavilion and trail use policy. So basically we're going back to, we're just approving what we have on the pavilion rental agreement as guidelines for the park tonight. And then we will adjust that as we need to.
Are you asking for a motion?
Yeah, I guess I'm not saying we're approving. I'm asking, can we? Yes, could I get a motion to approve those as our, as our park, city park policy?
So we're talking about the pavilion reservation form that I have.
Okay, right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Malkovich and a second from Okay, I have a motion from Malkovich and a second from Ottley. Are there any other questions? I know it's a little bit, but any other questions or discussion on that? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. And Karen, Karen, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Nothing, we're tabled the employee policy manual. That'll be next meeting. We'll do about that. The traffic control on Summit Creek and Woodland Hills Drive, we decided we didn't need to take any action. We'll just, I can move forward administratively on that. We'll have, make sure that we have, get Jeremy Searle in that loop, the Summit Creek people involved over there, and Craig, to make sure that we get those signs placed and install and working.
I wanted to thank Bob for attending with me the visit we had over at Summit Creek. It was good to, to have us there and talking to Ben and them and Bucky at Summit Creek. I had a good meeting with them about ideas.
For traffic?
For traffic on Summit Creek.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
They've, they've got some great ideas, and they've, and they're in the, in the agreement. And so I think they'll be great.
Okay.
And creative solution. Yeah.
Good. Maybe, maybe some of them we can tie for other parts of the city if we feel like it'll work. All right. And then the next thing on the agenda is the new type 3 slash type 1 fire truck. And I, Chris, tell me what action we need to take specifically.
So this would be an action to, to purchase the truck, to get a purchase order and to sign the contract with, I don't know if it's Poseidon's Martin or with Pierce directly.
Sitting over here. Go ahead, Dave.
Chris, I have a question. Are we voting also on which of those two funding options that you proposed, or just on the idea that we're going to take, get the truck?
Those are funding options as if we were purchasing it right today, just so council have an idea of the costs.
Yeah, since, since we have no details on that fund, on the interest rates and things like that until we actually close the deal, we're not gonna, and, I mean, I'm not planning to make that part of the motion. So, but Dave's in the middle of the question, so we will let him.
Is Mike on now so he can do it?
Yeah. So I make a motion that we approve the mayor to, to sign a purchase order for the truck.
And I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussion?
Do, do we need an RFP or anything on this?
No, they've basically done, I mean, it wasn't an RFP, but they've basically done that.
Whatever is required. Okay, great.
So I have a motion from Pratt and a second from Kinniston. Any other questions or discussion?
I just will, I just appreciate the hours and hours that members of that department spent researching that. It was a long, drawn-out, two-year and more process. So, yeah, there was a lot of work. It's a lot of work to build a fire truck.
Due diligence with capital letters, I did.
Yes.
Thank you, Doral. Yes, and thank you. So, thank you, Craig, and everyone else that was involved. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes and carries. There's nothing left on the agenda unless somebody has an emergency thing to bring up. And then the ball is in your court.
Motion to, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from MacArthur, a second from Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for good meeting. Thank you for all you do.